The U.S. and Texas flag, and Commissioner Ford will lead us.
Please pray with me. Dear Lord, thank you for this day. Thank you for the opportunity to do the good work of Brazos County. Lord, watch over our first responders, our correctional officers, our educators, and our military. Lord, let us today do your will and not just our own. In your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Our second item is to call for citizen input or any concerns. Is there anyone who wishes to address the court?
Commissioner Berry, can we confirm that Judge Peters and Mr. Colley are attending electronically this morning?
Yes. Judge Peters?
He's here. He may have a cell.
Yes, I'm on here.
Okay, good. And I've spoken to Ms. Colley, and she is on.
I hope they're not absent, just because I came back.
I'm not going to get into that.
Just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Yep, okay. Is there anyone who wishes to address the court? Sign-in will go on to consider items three through 28.
Okay, we have her back.
Okay, sorry that I hung up on you. Item number three is a proclamation 20-006, 21-006, declaring the week of May 2nd through 8th, 2021 as National Correctional Officers and Employees Week. We have a motion to accept.
Salute.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Let me read the proclamation. Do we have anyone from Corrections here?
Maybe a few.
Maybe just a few.
Maybe a few.
Okay. Do you all want to come up? Whereas National Correctional Officers and Employees Week was first proclaimed on May 5th, 201984 by President Ronald Reagan when he signed Proclamation 5187, creating National Corrections Officers Week to recognize the men and women who work in jails, prisons, and community corrections across the country. And whereas National Correctional Officer and Employees Week became the official name of the first week in May, when in 1986, the U.S. Senate officially changed the name from National Correctional Officers Week. And whereas National Correctional Officers and Employees Week has been designated as the week of May 2nd, 2021 through May 8th, 2021 by the U.S. Department of Justice and the Federal Bureau of Prisons. And whereas National Correctional Officers Employee Week honors the work of correctional officers and correctional personnel for their service with honor, respect, and integrity, and raises the awareness of the duties, hazards, and sacrifices made by the correctional employees. And whereas National Correctional Officers and Employees Week in Brazos County recognizes correctional officers and employees for their role in safeguarding the citizens of Brazos County by providing safe, secure, and humane incarceration of offenders within their custody. Whereas National Correctional Officers and Employees Week in Brazos County this year wants to recognize all correctional officers and employees for their acts of heroism, dedication to duty, and commitment to our community during the COVID-19 outbreak of 2020. Now therefore be it resolved that the Commissioners' Court of Brazos County does hereby proclaim the week of May 2nd, 2021, through May 8th, 2021, as National Correctional Officers and Employees Week. All citizens are encouraged to pay tribute to all the many correctional employees working in Brazos County for the vital public services they provide. Proclaim this 27th of April, 2021, and it's signed by the Commissioners' Court. Sheriff, do you want to say something?
Judge, Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to recognize these public servants today. The men and women that operate our nation's correctional facilities, whether that's county, city, state, or federal facilities, have a difficult job. They work in an environment, challenging circumstances, day in and day out. This year especially, they face so many new challenges. In fact, this year, the American Correctional Association says that 226 correctional employees died in the line of duty as a result of COVID. So, thank you for this opportunity to recognize these hard-working folks. Thank you for everything the court has done to take care of our correctional officers. And I'll turn it over to Warden Herrera.
I do like to take the opportunity to thank the Brazos County Commissioners' Court for having us out here, giving us this invitation to bring our staff and recognize us on Correctional Police Officers Week. This is a time where we honor all correctional staff, but especially the ones that have paid the ultimate sacrifice. And I can't thank you all enough for having us out here. And please keep everybody in your thoughts and prayers as they go out and do their jobs on a daily basis. And I would like to mention that during the pandemic, we did lose one of our lieutenants, Lieutenant Triva Preston at the Hamilton Unit, and let's keep her in our thoughts and prayers, too. Thank you all very much.
We also like to thank the Commissioners' Court for allowing us here today. And like everyone else said here, we really like to thank our officers for working through the pandemic. We didn't have a single kid get COVID in detention, so it's really a blessing. The staff was there just about every day unless they were sick or ill. So, we really like to thank our officers for what they do and continue to do, and thank you, Court.
They're good? Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Appreciate you very much for what you do.
Although this is the week we recognize them, they do a great job all year round, and we appreciate all their work. Item number four is a proclamation 20-007, declaring May 6th through 12th as National Nurses Recognition Week.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have someone from the nurses here. This is a proclamation for National Nurses Recognition. Whereas National Nurses Day is a day we celebrate nurses and raise awareness of the importance and their contributions to society, this day, May 6th, is part of a National Nurses Week, a week that ends on May 12th and marks the birthday of Florence Nightingale. And whereas President Reagan signed Proclamation 4913 on March 25th, 1982, proclaiming National Recognition Day for nurses to be May 6th. And whereas nursing has a variety of different levels of skills, as well as areas in which they contribute, with each playing an important role, which facilities to maintain doctor-patient care. And whereas nurses are one of the most integral parts of a medical team, fulfilling a crucial role in providing patients and their families the highest level of care, as well as a key means of emotional support, significantly contributing to improve patient and family outcomes. And whereas Brazos County this year wants to recognize all nurses in the community, as well in corrections for their acts of heroism, compassion, dedication to duty, and commitment to our community during the COVID-19 outbreak of 2021. Now therefore be it proclaimed that Brazos County Commissioners' Court does hereby proclaim May 6th through 12th as National Nursing Recognition Week in Brazos County to increase the public's awareness of the importance the role of nurses play to improve and promote health and wellness on their patients, proclaim this 27th day of April, 2021. We can't say enough about our nurses and what a tremendous job they do, and we appreciate them.
So I guess today is Sheriff's Office Day at Commissioners' Court. But, and we won't try to take credit for the whole week. This is for all nurses. But because we also have a medical staff at the Sheriff's Office, I wanted to thank them for their service and for guiding us through this COVID pandemic, everything that they've done to keep our facility safe. And so, thank you to all nurses, and especially those working for the Sheriff's Office for your service.
Item number five is proclamation 21-008, declaring May 2021 as Mental Health Awareness Month.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do we have someone from NAMBY here, or mental health? Okay, well, just thank you for the work you do. And we'll move on to item number six, which is approval of the following reappointments to Brazos County Emergency Service District Number Three, with terms to expire 12/31/2022. A. Jerry Merker. B. Bill Milburger. C. Rusty Lewis. D. Doug Whedon. And E. Martin Riley.
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of donated, number seven, approval of donated or unclaimed property items left by inmates leaving the Brazos County Jail.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number eight, approval of the following job description. A. Temporary attendant, exposition complex, 1,040 hours, class code 0832.
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Number nine, request from the Sheriff's Office to enreek diner's club credit card limit from $10,000 to $15,000 to meet the needs of the Sheriff's Office.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Number 10, request from the jail administrator to increase diner's credit card limit from $1,000 to $15,000 to accommodate upcoming conference expenses and to meet the needs of the Brazos County Detention Center.
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number 11, award of RFP number 21-618, Brazos County Bridge Repairs. Recommended award, Fugler Construction Company Incorporated.
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Number 12, award of RFP 21-625, Dick Elliott Road Reconstruction. Recommended award, Larry Young Paving.
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Number 13, award of bid number 21-118, Janitorial Trashliners. Recommended award, Competitive Choice Incorporated.
Move approval of the award.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number 14, approval of no award for IQ 21-119 herbicides and suffragants due to receiving one incomplete bid.
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number 15, approval of no award for RFP CIP number 21-569, jail shower renovations due to limited responses.
Move approval of the rejection of bids.
Second.
All those, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Excuse me, no award.
That's correct, no award. Number 16 is approval of extension of contract 20-105R for jury summons with USIO Output Solutions from April 25th, 2021 through June 30th, 2021.
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number 17, consider and take action on the Wellburn Special Utility District Utility Permit to construct a road bore for a two-inch waterline crossing under Hope's Creek Road and to lay 1,200 feet of longitudinal line within the right-of-way of River Oaks Drive. Site is located in Precinct One.
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Number 18, consider and take action on the Sudden Link Communications Utility Permit to construct three road bores under Wallace Road and Lantern Lane for the installation of a fiber optics communication for internet service to the Lantern Cove subdivision. Site's located in Precinct Two.
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 19, consider and take action on the Apache Corporation Utility Permit to construct a road bore for a three-inch and six-inch pipeline crossing under Tonkaway Lake Road, 5,055 feet southeast of Bird Pond Road. Site's located in Precinct Two.
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Number 20, consider and take action on the FWP Holdings LLC Utility Permit to install a temporary 10-inch polyurethane waterline crossing under Oak Lake Road and Democrat Road. Project will provide water to an oil well. Site's located in Precinct Two.
Commissioner Berry, I'll move to approve, but I would like to discuss whenever we...
Okay, well, let's have a second for discussion. I'll second, and let's discuss, and discussion?
Commissioner, I just want to thank our road and bridge for the hard work that they do and remind everyone that this is going underneath the road through one of our culverts. And with the rainy season upon us, just wanted to caution that we need to consider that whenever we do these type crossings.
So noted. Any other discussion? Thank you for that, Commissioner. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number 21, approval of the final plot of the Cutler subdivision, Block One, lots one through three, 8.999 acre Stephen Jones survey, A-27, College Station ETJ, Brazos County, Texas. Site is located in Precinct Four.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number 22, request for tax refunds for the following due to errors by BCAD and/or USPS. A. Sadie Properties LLC, $78.76 BCAD error. B. Gabriel Vander Cook Chandler, $124.68 BCAD error. C. Robert and Sally Kissler, $32.26 BCAD error. D. Peter and Deborah Napoli, $240.14 USPS error. E. Richard Mundee Jr., $220.62 BCAD error. F. Kenneth and Vicky Williamson, $141.51 BCAD error.
Move approval, items A through F.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number 23, tax refund applications for the following overpayments. A. Jackie and George Warren, $38.97. B. Patricia Garcia Rodriguez, $43.15.
Move approval of A and B.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number 24 is budget amendments. Budget amendments FY 20-21, 29.1 through 29.4.
Move approval.
Second.
All those, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion, any opposed? Motion carries. Number 24 is budget amendments. Budget amendment FY 20-21, 29.1 through 29.4. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't cross it off. 25 is personal change of status. A is personal action forms, and B is employment and separation.
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number 26 is payments of claim. Claim number 810-7051 through 810-7182, and claim number 900,000. 9001730 through 9001777. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval of claims.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll skip down to 29. Acknowledgement of Brazos County Emergency Services District Number Three Independent Auditor's Report and Financial Statements for the year ended September 30th, 2020. Number 30 is acknowledgement of monthly reports submitted in April, 2021. Juvenile's report.
Good morning, Judge Peters and Commissioners. First of all, I would like to say that for the last two months, we have been without a nurse in detention. And the Sheriff's Office has graciously allowed their medical staff to come over and handle the things that needed to be taken care of, of course, along with Julie Anderson and Dr. Richards. So we really appreciate them, the fact that they've helped us out, and we hope to have a nurse again really soon. So, I'd like, we have 27 juveniles in detention, 24 males and three females. We have 10 in isolation, and those are just COVID, those are just protocols. 23 monitors and two pending. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Sheriff? Number 32, Sheriff's Report on Inmate Population.
Good morning again. Inmate population, our peak in the last 24 hours, 520. That's 560, well, let's see. I read that wrong. Our peak in the last 24 hours was 561. That's 520 men, 41 women. We have 34 on electronic monitoring, four EMs pending. We have zero positive COVID cases in the jail. We have four staff members that are out with COVID or on quarantine protocols. And then just real quickly, our state inspector showed up this morning. So Chief Stewart has got a busy couple of days ahead, but we're ready for it, and we'll be looking forward to reporting out soon.
Good. Well, thank you. Number, going back to 27, convene into executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.087 of the Texas Government Code for Deliberation Regarding Economic Development Negotiations.
Commissioner, if I may, since the room will be cleared when we go, I did have a announcement of an item I've been asked under Agenda Item Number 33. I've been asked by the Brazos County A&amp;M Club to convey thanks to Constable Jeff Reeves and to two of his deputy constables, Gene Huffman and Louis Karanka, for providing security services at the Brazos County A&amp;M Club 2021 muster last April 21st. So please convey the thanks of the Brazos County A&amp;M Club to you and to your deputies.
Will do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other announcements?
Commissioner, I think Chief Stewart, or former Chief Stewart, Jim Stewart, will give a vaccination as well. Brian Jones will talk about the E-Rat program.
Great. Thank you. Chief?
Yes, my honor. Good morning. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity to come and visit with you. And Judge Peters out in the ether. And Sheriff Dickey, when you referenced that Chief Stewart was going to have a busy couple of days, I got to tell you, my heart jumped a little bit there, and I realized it was that Stewart over there.
Thinking something else on your plate you weren't prepared for.
I want to bore you with a few numbers, if you'll bear with me, first this morning. As of last Thursday, which was the last day that we administered vaccines until today, the hub had administered right at 85,000 vaccinations. 85,000. That's 85,000 injections into individual people's arms, which is one heck of an accomplishment for that crew out there. Of that 85,000, about 52,000 were first doses. So when you look at the population of Brazos County, we're still, as far as the hub is concerned, we've only penetrated about 25% of Brazos County. Now, there are other resources out there that are pushing out vaccines, but your hub, the county's hub, has pushed out the preponderance of first doses that have been seen in Brazos County so far. Second doses as of last Thursday was right at 33,000 second doses. So when we're all done this week, the hub crew will have administered, or the hub club, as they like to call themselves, will have administered 90,000 doses. I'll be quiet for just a second, because that's a significant number. 90,000 individual arms that presented themselves, been injected, and we send them on their way without any hiccups whatsoever. We did tote one person to the hospital, but it was just temporary, in the ER and out the ER once they were comfortable that they were stabilized. the ER, once they were comfortable that they were stabilized. Now, the bad news, if we want to call it that, is that the demand for first doses has just fallen through the floor. Last week, we administered 1,100 first doses. They can do that in the morning's time. I'm sorry. Last week, we administered 866 doses. Week before was 1,100. So there's a steady pattern of it coming down. And of the 1,000 appointments we had listed as of Friday, this morning, there was only over, a little over 400 appointments scheduled for today. So the demand for first doses is just not there anymore. The media likes to ask me why, what's the deal with that? And I said, look, I'm a retired Army Colonel, I can't figure that stuff out. It's, you know, there's a natural reluctance to get the vaccination, there's people that, for various insunderer reasons, are not getting it. But what we're seeing at the hub is a diminished demand for it. So we have conferred with our policy group, which are the mayors and the county judge and the hospitals, about when should we cease administering first doses? We reached the decision yesterday. The hospital concurs with the EMCs that next Tuesday will be the last first dose that we'll administer for, out of the hub. Now, the hub will still be functioning for another four to six weeks, because we have to administer those second doses. So let's don't let folks go out there thinking that as of next Tuesday, that the hub is done and is gone. That's not the case. We'll still be functioning, the infrastructure's still there to administer those second doses. So that's really the essence of what I wanted to tell you this morning, but if you'll bear with me another 60 seconds or so, I want to do a shout-out, as it's called these days, to the Brazos County staff that's been so essential to what we're doing at the hub. No particular order, but Leslie Contheres in Risk Management has been a prime partner, and we call her the sanitation queen for the hub. She was responsible for ensuring that the hub is ready to go at all times. Purchasing and the budget office and the auditors, to a certain extent, were their force all the way through. It was a marvelous experience, Sheriff, dealing with purchasing and budget where they didn't say to me, well, that's not in the budget. That never came up. I just, well, I need that, let's get it done. And they did it, which is, which is great. Now, just to alleviate any concerns out there, this is all tax dollars. These are, for the most part, reimbursable expenses from the federal government. But Charles never once called me and said, well, I don't have money for that. Didn't have to do that, so he got it for us. The EMCs, Michelle and Jason, were actively involved in setting up the hub, managing the hub, and helping us with the mini hubs. The IT department, Stewart got the wild idea one week that we needed our own website, because we wanted to post these appointments and do it ourselves. I called Eric Caldwell, Eric was on vacation. Despite that, he made sure that it went forward. His smart person got together and created a website for us in a matter of eight days. So from the time I asked for it, eight days later, it was up and running. The Sheriff's Office and the guys, Lieutenant David Villarreal, who was our law enforcement branch chief, did a great job. The Brazos Center, poor old Joanna, we just came and took over her building. I'm sure we drove her nuts, but she's been a great partner for us, is our landlord throughout this whole thing. And lastly, and I'd be remiss not to mention, Ed Bull, this small guy standing here behind me, has been a wonderful mentor, advisor, and counselor to me as we went through this to make sure that we were in accordance with the law, in accordance with Brazos County policy. And I can't thank him enough for always being there for me and on the other end of the telephone. So subject to any questions or comments, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Chief, for the excellent job you did. And also thank you for the shout-out for our outstanding employees, because they really are terrific, and they do the job every single day for our county. So thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
It's an amazing accomplishment, the way you finished this thing. We're so proud and happy to have worked with you. And I want to also thank all the volunteers that you had out there.
Absolutely.
Yeah, a smooth-running machine. Is there anyone else who has comment? Yes, sir.
I'm Brian Jones. I'm a program manager with Brazos Valley Council of Governments, and we're in partnership with the county to spend the Brazos County Emergency Rental Assistance Program funds. A few weeks ago, we kicked off on April 12th to start spending funding for rental assistance for Brazos County residents. The update is, we're up and running, we're going good. We had a strong push starting off, and then it lulled a bit. Some of that is attributed to, we're in direct competition with state funds for this county as well. So I've been working with the judge's staff, and we're going to do a publicity campaign starting probably either later this week or next week, and you'll start really seeing the county advertising to get assistance in there. The staff is trained, we're ready to go, we're hoping we get a really strong push. Some of the other challenges we're seeing, the rent in Brazos Counties are kind of, in Brazos Counties, kind of low. And so we're going to look at seeing what we can do to really get a volume of people over, since the amount of money we'll be spending. The grant's approximately $6.9 million, so it's a lot of money to spend really quick. The funds need to be obligated pretty much by the end of September, but we have through December to spend the funds. Some of the important factors we need to know is, it's a two-part process to apply for this rent. It takes the landlord and the tenant to both give us information. The tenant has to be income-eligible, and the landlord's just got to supply the information to pay them. So it's a simple process, but the application process isn't as easy and as simple as we like to have it. So there's a lot of, a lot of work going on behind the scenes. We tried to speed it up to do much of it electronically as possible, so that it'll go prompt, and we can respond a lot quicker by email. So we provide all the services, fax, email, drop-off, boxes, the whole, the whole kinkaboodle to get people to get in there and get it to us. Let's see. We want people to understand that go to this, it's not the council of governments, it's on the Brazos County website. We're just administering the program for the county. On the website, if you'll go to the main page and scroll all the way down to the bottom of the opening homepage, look on the bottom left in the blue bar, and you can see for emergency rental assistance, there's all the telephone numbers, the emails, and contact information. Is there anything else we want to touch base on?
I'd just like to reiterate that we have $6.9 million. We're relying on our media partners to hopefully get the word out. The criteria was rather tight, but as of last week, that has been broadened, and we're optimistic that we can use this money beneficially. We're hoping that people will reach out, and the number is 979-361-4666. That's 361-4666. Thank you.
One other main point of interest I'd like to touch is that you don't have to be in eviction, and you don't have to be past due. This money can be for past due all the way going forward, so we can pay in months in advance. So we can pay up to 15 months, but in three-month increments, you have to recertify. So you have to reapply after three months. So that's a very important factor, that it's not just a one-time deal, you have to reapply.
Have, maybe this is a question for Mr. Bull, have any of the restrictions loosening up on this been to where they can include small businesses, or is this still individual residential rentals?
It's individuals, it does not include commercial businesses.
Okay.
And we've been evolving, we've been kind of postponing, doing a big push, because the guidelines, like Mr. Bull stated, has been opened up and broadened, and is making it more available. So some of the clients that we were seeing right off the bat were denied, have now been readjusted, now we can go back and assist some of those clients that we thought were ineligible previously. So, you know, the criteria has gotten a whole lot better and a whole lot easier to apply.
Thank you.
We're encouraging people to apply even if they don't think they may be eligible, just so we can be sure and have the data and records for them in the future.
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's great, thank you.
Okay. All right. Any other concerns? Okay, we'll go back to number 27 and convene in executive session, I've already read the item. And the time is 10:40. Bruce? Who do we need for executive session?
Probably Irene Jett and I. You guys. Nancy.
She wants you to announce who's supposed to be in special, in the executive.
Okay, for executive session, that'll be the Commissioners, Ed Bull, Bruce Errett, and Irene Jett.
And Cheryl.
Let me know when you're back on. Okay, we're out of executive session, the time is 10:59, and we have no action to take. So we'll move on to item number 35, which is to adjourn.